All right, it is, what is the date, the 19th?
The 19th.
It is April 19th, 2021. The time is 6:33 and we're, all council is here for our interviews for the vacant position. Mark Renicki is our first candidate, okay? So Mark, I'm just gonna go ahead and do the 10 basic questions.
10, 10 basics, okay.
All right, have you read the council legislative rules in Rules of Engagement?
Uh, not councils, but planning commission, I assume is somewhat similar, so, no, I have not.
Probably exactly the same, actually.
Oh, good, then you know. I've read it a few times and been through lawyer, let's go seminars on how to conduct yourself, so.
Cool, and in your opinion, what is the primary role of the city council?
Well, I, I call it your protectors, okay? You're in the protection business with fire, police, infrastructure, protect citizens' rights, protect developers' rights, so I call it, you know, overarching, you're in the protection business. Manage money, that you're protecting the citizens' money. I notice I say citizens, not your, not your money, it's the citizens' money, how you spend it wisely and frugally. So, again, you're in the protection business.
All right, excellent. Weekly time commitment, if not including regular council meetings, to read materials, attend outside meetings, is approximately 10 to 20 hours a week, sometimes more, sometimes less. And then the meetings can be day, during day or during evening. Are you willing and available to commit at the necessary time to be effective council member?
Yes, I am willing and able, I'm used to the time commitment.
And I'm going relatively quick because I know there's enough questions that'll take up our time. Are you willing to attend council meetings and other events in person?
I am. By the way, you can look at my record on the planning commission, I very rarely missed a meeting over 19 years.
Over 19 years, which is only beaten out by Austin Mueller.
I know, still, still angers.
He said you're, I know it bothers you. I just, I bother them. Of the personal and professional skills you have, what are the most essential or beneficial skills that you will bring to council?
Okay, well, number one, I've had my own business, so I know how to run a business. So I know something about money and perseverance. What other skills? As an architect, I worked both sides of the aisle, I know how to, I know what, I work with developers, I know what they're thinking. I've also served on many, well, planning commission and several neighborhood associations where I've been the zoning, zoning chair. So I know what it's like on the other side of the aisle. So there's a, a lot of information that I have on that subject.
Let's see, I love, I love asking you questions in the first place, it's different than our front, my front porch, that's for sure. Are you familiar with Littleton building codes?
I think so.
We can answer that question for you.
And I have my problems with the code and code enforcement and I have problems with the zoning code. No, it's, yes, I dealt with zoning codes my, you know, for 47 years as an architect, codes all over the metropolitan area. So I know codes, I know zoning and building codes.
And a significant council activity during the next six months is the Unified Land Use Codes. There you go. What is your current understanding of the ULC?
The reason I'm here, I'd say number one reason I'm here is to, is to finish what I've been involved with for a long, long time. I, I was term limited and we were halfway through and that has bothered me ever since. So this is, correct, if appointed, this is my chance to have some say in the final ULC.
Cool. And please describe your community involvement and/or your relative relevant experience over the last five years.
Okay, well, again, okay, planning commission, I'm also been on the board of directors for the Aberdeen Village Improvement Association. Actually, I've been on part of that association for, for good grief, probably 20, 23, 24 years. Involved with every, every community that I've lived in, I've always been on the board of directors, both in Corey Merrill, West Washington Park, now in Littleton. I've served, again, on the planning commission, I've also been liaison to a number of committees. The BIAC, Building Industrial Affairs, I've also liaised on to the Stock Preservation Board. I've served on, I can't, I can't even keep track of all the citizens committees I've dealt with and been on for revising the downtown codes, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a lot of involvement.
Yeah, BIAC, I haven't heard that one in a long time.
BIAC, yes.
I like that board personally.
I loved it, it was a lot of, I learned a lot about the economics of the city.
Are you familiar with the city?
Uh, here it is, here, I went online to figure, it was about 10 pages and 300 pages later, are you crazy? I'm some, yes, I'm, I'm familiar with it.
Please identify what you believe are the top two issues facing Littleton.
Ah, number one issue to me is infrastructure. Littleton has been skating for, for years, developers putting in street sidewalks on their dime and the city hasn't done much to upkeep those, that infrastructure over the years. It's time to pay the piper. I've seen the reports you have too, the number of projects that are, that are needed to be taken care of and there's no budget for it. So I'd say that's number one issue is how the city raises the money to, to take care of the infrastructure. My second, okay, I have four or five and they're listed here. My second one would be, I think would be Santa Fe, what's gonna happen with Santa Fe. It's our last, last chance to do something effective for this and beneficial to the city. Whether it be ends or north, ends or south, up and down the, up and down the road. What's, what's the Pell study gonna do? I, I fully know what CDOT's gonna do. They're gonna try to put a four lane each direction superhighway and cut our community in half. So I'm quite interested in what the outcome there and what our input will be. So, and then possible developments that are up and, up and down Santa Fe on really underdeveloped lots in, on Santa Fe.
Cool, cool. My last question, but I don't need an answer yet because then we're gonna go around the horn. But, but you'll have a chance at the end of this, just ask us whatever questions that you might have.
Well, Scott, did you come up and think of anything you want?
Um, well, thanks, Mark, for coming in, thanks for applying, thanks for all your years on the planning commission. Um, I don't know, what's on my mind, let's see. We had some consultants come in on Tuesday and talk to us about a potential ballot measure on a sales tax increase. What are your thoughts about that?
I could see, well, I've filled out the, I think there was some kind of survey that I talked to somebody about. Sales tax increase, I hate tax increases, but I am in favor of it. I was driving on, on our streets after a pretty heavy rain, so the streets were crystal and I could see every divot, every hole up and down my neck of the woods, which is north, north of Littleton, driving on Ridge Road, I mean, there's some desperation going on here. So I would be in favor of, my feeling would be to phrase it as a, well, I'm convinced otherwise, would be to phrase it in that it would be sunset it, you know, basically ask the citizens to give you the money and prove that you're using it wisely. And I would hope that, I don't know if that's possible legally, to dedicate it to, to infrastructure. Mostly if it goes to Reister, so.
Reister. Thanks, Mark.
Actually, a couple of questions. What are the other, what are the other top issues? You said you had like three or four more, I'm just curious.
Well, there's downtown, downtown seems like everybody wants to stuff everything in downtown, they're loving it to death. Whether it be density, now, now, does, downtown does have that existing zoning. And to me, this, in my sphere, my world, the zoning code is the most important document in the community other than the budget and perhaps, you know, working with the police and fire. So, you know, the zoning code currently allows quite a bit more density than, than exists now, especially over here with the R5, and you can see what's happening in the R5 area. So downtown, let's see, what would be another one? The corridors, you know, the aging, sad sack status of Littleton Boulevard, Broadway is close second. Aging shopping centers, it's been a concern of the planning commission forever. So that would be another two, and then there's always the river and how do we protect our baby? That is, so that's my five or six.
Great, thank you, and yeah, thank you for coming tonight and applying, really, really appreciate that. My other question, you already answered in your letter, I was gonna ask if you were gonna be running for any plans to run for council in November?
I'll couch it by saying if the heavens depart and the angels sing and, you know, by acclamation, people want me to reapply, my, my goal is really to serve out Corina's term for two reasons. One, again, I wanna be involved with the ULC, which is very, very important. Secondly, I don't want to make it, make it seem like I'm trying to get a leg up on, on, on the election in the fall. So I serve to fill her term, which ends in, what, November? And, and then let those that want to apply, apply.
Great, thank you.
You know, 19 years of all the reading I've had to do, you get a little tired. Somebody asked, sent me an email, you know, weren't you gonna take a vacation?
If you were appointed to fill Corina's role, is there something that you would wanna accomplish by November?
Uh, I'll get back to, I'll say it now for the third time. How, my accomplishment will make the ULC work for Littleton to be for Littleton, not just some kind of template. I have, I've said this many times, when we are talking about our consultants. I don't want, I don't want a driver, I want a chauffeur. And so my concern with our consultant is, is who's driving the bus? I want Littleton to be, to be in control of the final say of the ULC, what's, what's best for Littleton. There's, when we started the, working on the ULC, I just had this image of the planning commission and me in particular getting involved with the writing of it, heavily involved, that hasn't quite happened. We've had study sessions, et cetera, they hear our opinion. I don't know if any of that filters down to what we're gonna be seeing on June 7th. So I will, June 7th is the day I read every word of that ULC and then get my comments going and tailor it to Littleton. So that would be my biggest accomplishment, I think, with the, with the short time I would be on council if appointed.
Do you think the ULC you'll see from what you know, and I realize I haven't seen it, we haven't seen it either, from all the study sessions, do you think it's going in the right direction? Or is it too much of what the consultant wants and maybe not enough of what you think should be good for the city?
I don't, I don't know, I have a feeling it's okay. Kenyon Keith did a wonderful job with the comprehensive plan, but it was a different person leading it now. So I do have some concerns. My, my one concern is they keep having these, these sessions where you have maybe, what, 40, 50 people sign in and they're the ones that are like driving the outcome. And I'm going, 50 people out of 48,000, 49,000 people, no. I always say that Littleton, there's probably 47,000 people that really, you know, the good people, they go, they'll go about their daily business and go to church, get their kids to school, earn a living. They don't know much about the city, they know very little about the city. There's maybe a thousand people that are mildly, medium interest in the city. Then there's, can I call it the rabid 50 or the rabid 100? The 100 that really are day to day, they watch all the, you know, all the tape recordings, et cetera. And so how do we get to the 48, 47,000 people? And so that's a, that's a concern that we're, it's, all the opinions are concentrated with 50 to 100 people.
I'm gonna make a note, he said old bike terminology tape recorder.
The day I was on the construction site and I said, what about, you know, where's your framing axe? And he laughed at me, framing axe? Okay.
You probably answered this question by me asking, that's the same question to everybody and maybe somebody else was not as clear. What is the one improvement you would like to see in the city?
Uh, well, from, from my little corner of the world, better architecture, but still allow for independence and creativity, that would be, that'd be one item. And you look, can, can help or it could hinder, so I would want to prove that. Density is gonna happen, I don't know if it's an improvement, but density is gonna happen in Littleton. It's allowed currently, how, how far do we let it go? So one of the things I want to see is what's comfortable for Littleton and, and still allow for, we're open for business. And right now, quite frankly, in the building and development community, Littleton is not open for business. We always say it is, but it ain't.
Okay, thank you.
Why do you say that?
I'm sorry?
Why do you say that?
Just the projects that developers, I mean, again, I work both sides of the aisle. You know, developers will, will put tons of money in and then it, it just seems like some of the projects that go before the planning commission don't end up happening. I've dealt with some commercial work, I do mostly residential work. My commercial work, you know, the fee structure is daunting and expensive and it takes a lot of time. So streamlining the building department, zoning, impact fees, everybody's got their handout for fees. I did addition for Macintosh Academy that was, I've done houses that are twice the size of the addition I did at Macintosh and before we broke ground, it was $40,000 of fees, everybody had their handout, including the fire, et cetera. So it, it, you know, and that, that was, that was small potatoes next to some of these big developments.
Good, or Scott asked you about the sales tax, how about the marijuana tax and the lodging tax?
Lodging tax, fine, marijuana tax, I would never approve, would have never had approved marijuana in the state, so don't touch it. Maybe as a youth I did, but those are wrong there. So, yeah, marijuana tax, I guess I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so you've been in the city for a long time, do you, do you like what's happening downtown Littleton currently with, with the slot homes and the development that's happening?
Slot homes are okay, I mean, they're, they're, they're no longer allowed.
Right.
But in the past, they were allowed, so, you know, I, you know, when I look at the zoning code, I immediately look at what's, what's allowed right now, what's a use by right? They don't have to talk to planning commission, they don't have to talk to you people, they just go in and get their permit and build.
Yeah.
So architecturally, there's, there's some really bad examples of architecture. I always say that downtown and good architecture don't go hand in hand these days. So I think it will improve with the downtown, what do you call it, the building block? The first one that was approved will help quite a bit. But it's, you know, it's somewhat a matter of taste, but there's, and we're gonna allow an extra story now. We're going up from, what, three to four stories? And so there's gonna be more density. It continually, I would say there's, there's nothing, there's no such thing as a perfect zoning code. And architects will always find a way around it, developers will always find a way around it to do what they wanna do. And so it's a cat and mouse game. So even though we do have that building block approved for downtown, there's gonna be tweaking. I know there's some tweaks that they want right now, that are proposing, and those tweaks should be ongoing. Our problem with Littleton is we've had a zoning code, most of the work was done when Carter was president, totally preposterous. So it, it needs to be looked at on a continuing basis. And we do have the planning staff that, that will do that now versus some of the planning staff in the past have been rather just flow of the flow.
Earlier you said, you know, Littleton's not open for business, but you're pro-business, pro-development, it just has to be the right.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the, in the middle here. You know, there's some developments that I'm opposed to, some that I am. I think it's a, it's a matter of where, where the project is, what's its impact on the, on the community in the area? What's the impact on traffic, you know, you add that all up. So, but again, I'm, you know, if, if it's allowed by code, then, you know, people say, well, gee, it's the last development. I never say own the last piece of land in any, in any development, because everybody thinks that's an open space. Okay? So, and it's only the new development that creates all the traffic problems, et cetera. A good example is Santa Fe. You know, we've got Sterling Ranch, yeah, big deal ranch, what, 80,000 people on the ranch. There's gonna be more ranches out that way, it's gonna have a big effect, it's not gonna stop. It's gonna have a huge effect on Santa Fe and, and of course, Littleton. So some of those developments, you know, my eyes glaze over and go, oh my God, here's another development.
Right, right, all right, I'm all good.
No questions?
Some questions, all right. Mark, you have any questions?
Uh, no, I, I know you. I know Littleton, I told you how I want to approach this and I want to finish the ULC and it would be a privilege to, I really admire Corina, it'd be a privilege to finish up her, her term and I really admire her, she was chair for three years while I was, two years while I was chair pro temp. And so really no questions.
All right, yeah, man. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Okay, cool.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Yeah. You guys do, you got what, three or four, three more to work, three more? Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
My next up will be Jason.
Well, that took, you were just, not quite, that's 25 minutes, I'm, I'm pretty quick, did I go too quick? Yeah, and I think Jason probably knows.
As we know, some people talk, may talk longer, get more information, because we know them well.
As long as we can get to the end, it's anybody 8:30.
Is that, is that when the pop drops?
Yeah.
Uh, it's pretty close. Now the lacrosse season's over for the pioneers, now I'm onto the abs.
There you go.
Are they doing well, the abs?
Yes, uh, yes.
I don't wanna talk, I know. Well, there's that one with these big Nuggets fans, I hear about the Nuggets every day.
Is it tomorrow night, February 8:30, something like that?
Tomorrow night, I got fewer.
Three, I think, yeah.
We're ready, right?
We are ready.
Jason, come on in. Hey, Jason.
Hey, buddy.
Good to see you. All right, we've allocated ourselves plenty of time.
Yeah, probably more than you might need.
So I'll ask the first 10 questions, then we'll go around the, feel free, so just basic questions, basically. Have you had a chance to read the city council legislative rules and Rules of Engagement?
I haven't, I've read the comprehensive plan, but I haven't read the most engaging, so.
And you were on LIFT, so, yeah, so it's, it's the same rules. In your opinion, what is the primary role of city council?
To, I would, in my opinion, it's to reflect the goals of the citizenry, to the best of your will. You know, and, and that's why you have districts, so, because, because the different districts have, have different values and different goals.
Uh, let's see, the weekly time commitment, not including city council meetings, to read the material and attend outside meetings is approximately 10 to 20 hours a week, sometimes more, sometimes less, and it's during the day, sometimes, sometimes in the evening to attend these meetings. Are you willing and available to commit at necessary time to be effective council member?
Yes, I do work a full-time job, but it's here, so, so I think we're, we are.
Are you willing to attend council meetings and other events in person?
Yes.
Of the personal and professional skills that you have, what is the most essential and beneficial skill, skill that you will bring to council?
So I spent the last couple of years on LIFT, I was, I left as the vice chairman of there and I've been now on the Historic Preservation Board. And I was on the library board back in, in Grapevine, so I'm very familiar with.
We're killing you, we're calling you the board.
No, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, next time you want me to kill another board. So, but, but I have this, this experience serving the city, but beyond that, I do have a law degree, I do have a law license, although my license is in Texas, but I could always turn up in Grapevine, I mean, sorry, Colorado if needed. I know contracts backwards and forwards, I can write documents and memos, you know, and I can volunteer to do that stuff for the council as needed. And I did that for LIFT, there were times when, when we were called on to sort of, you know, draft things that, that we could propose to the council or that might be adopted. Not necessarily that it would be the right language, but my skill is in attacking a blank page so that other people can respond to it, and that's, that's probably what it meant every month.
Okay, are you familiar with Littleton building codes?
No, not, not intensely, but, you know, I'm getting there.
Okay, a significant council activity during the next six months is the Unified Land Use Code. And what is your current understanding of Littleton codes?
I mean, it's, I understand that you're planning on presenting a draft of it in June. It's the Uniform Land Use Code, which was something that was called on in the comprehensive plan. I think the most exciting thing to me that was expressed in one of the presentations that you guys heard was the guy said, if you wanna build a garage, you will be able to go to the new ULUC and you'll be able to find and select and print out the stuff that is particular to your project, which is priceless. I mean, that would be something that, although it'll put a lot of land use lawyers out of business, but I mean, it would be, it would be priceless to, to have that. You know, I'm always thinking, you know, can I, can I pay, can I pay a part of my yard just to put a big car in? You know, and, and it would, it would be nice, it would be nice to have a more modernized code.
Please describe your community involvement and/or your relevant experience over the last five years.
Sure, so I came to Colorado in 2013 and to Littleton in, in 2016 and immediately got involved in urban renewal. And the reason why was that my father, my father was a city manager, so I always grew up going from town to town and sort of living and, you know, you get out of school and just go hang out in the city manager's office. And so, so I, and so council meetings actually were a part of my growing up, was just that that's just where my dad was on like Wednesday nights, where I was. So I got involved in urban, in urban renewal with LIFT and, and council saw fit to, to tail that for now and although it remains one of the tools that the, that the citizenry might make, make themselves well. And then after that, the library board, which makes sense, because I'm a children's book author and, which, I don't know if you know that or not, but my books are like all over the library here. And then, and now the Historic Preservation Board, which is so exciting, I mean, it is so, so exciting. Well, what was cool about it is this past week, we were voting as a board just on whether we found particular, particular buildings to be contributing to the historical nature of the, of the neighborhood based on the guidance, of course, the council would give us. And in the end, you know, we've received guidance, we've received the policy, we're trying to see if it applies. Very exciting stuff, because reasonable minds can still differ on whether Palenque is a historic building. It was very cool, it was cool stuff, yeah.
Which one's Palenque?
This is the one that used to be Merle's.
Adelaide's.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was like auto shop, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was a garage, yeah, it was a practice mission when we.
That's right, yes. Well, what's wild about, about the choice they've made is that the historic building is there in a different color scheme from the extension that they built around it. So you kind of imagine that you could, you could take a big hand of God and remove the front and the old building would, would still be there. But that's a lot of change, so the question is, you know.
Yeah, Grand Station, same way, by the way.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
Are you familiar with the city?
Some, I mean, I would, I would have to dig into it, I don't imagine.
Because we've committed every page to memory.
I mean, what I'm, what I'm familiar with is, is what you guys, and I, and ma'am, I attend your, your meetings when, when you address the citizenry and, and, you know, what I'm familiar with are the challenges with the budget that you have, which is the enormous shortfall and so forth, but no.
And that's my next question. Please identify what you believe are the top two issues facing Littleton.
Uh, I would say probably housing because of the enormous growth that you have coming in and in the, in the comprehensive plan, you've identified a number of, of priorities regarding housing. And then of course, just the budget shortfall that comes. And then, of course, uh, just the, the budget shortfall that comes from, you know, a, a, a sales tax scheme that hasn't been updated in a long time and, uh, a lot of different factors on how, how much you can raise in, in revenue and so forth. And I, I have by no means an expert on that stuff, but I know that that's, that's the challenge. So to me, it would be housing and revenue.
Okay, cool. And my last question, then answer it after everybody goes around the table here. Uh, and if you have any questions for us, it'll be time for you to ask at the end here. Go to Scott.
Well, oh, oh, you wanted me to, I thought you wanted me to ask questions.
Well, yeah, let's go.
No, 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 go crazy. Yours will be better than mine.
Yeah, since you identified a top issue, talk to us about, uh, about housing. If you choose housing in Littleton, what do you envision?
Well, I mean, the, the good thing is, even if I had strong opinions that, that ran counter to, I, I believe you're supposed to use your gifts to actually, to actually reflect the, the will of the citizen and the desires of the citizenry, broken up and tenured, of course, by the fact that we're in districts. So you've already got a comprehensive plan that says that certain things are important, such as that we want to have a mixture of housing that meets different, different costs and different abilities. We want to be able to allow people, we want to support, uh, care, uh, care and aging at home and so forth. So we don't have enough of that stuff. And, and there's also going to be a tendency to jump on proposals that might check one of those boxes, but not necessarily well. You had the vote last week about the, the big development at Mineral and Santa Fe. And I actually have no idea how I would have voted on that one, because, because I haven't studied it nearly enough. But the good thing is people vote according to what they believe the priorities of the city, city are and say, you know, I think this needs it, it doesn't need it. But, um, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of those priorities that we've set that we don't have enough stock for. And so figuring out how to get it here is, is going to be a thing.
Yes, you're up.
Oh, yeah, thanks for coming tonight. Thank you for flying.
Oh, no, that's kind of you.
Nice to see you. Any plans to run for city council in your neighborhood?
Uh, I mean, yeah, I've tossed that around, um, because I've been with, uh, with, with various boards and, and, you know, be very interested, but, uh, but not for certain, so I'm not, I'm not sure yet.
If, if you were to decide to run, do you, do you foresee that impacting your ability to serve on council? Because it's a pretty big job to.
To run? Yes, well, no, sure. No, I don't see it, I, I don't, I don't see it for stalling the ability to be effective. So, um, and everybody else is going to have to run again as well, so, so everybody's going to be busy.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, thank you. Is there something you hope to accomplish if you were appointed to fill out the remainder of the at-large position?
I'm really looking forward to, uh, to hearing more about the downtown, downtown development and, uh, and hearing more about the, about the corridor part of the, of the ULC. And, and also being a part of communicating the draft of the ULUC, because that's going to be coming in June. Uh, but I don't have a, a very strong agenda. I, I need to, I need to learn. What I would really like to do in a philosophical way is lower the temperature, you know, and have people, but, you know, and help in communicating that we're a bunch of creative people. We're a bunch of, of smart people who are here trying to the best of our ability to, to steer this ship as, as has been expressed is, is the, is the will of the people. And, um, and I, and I think the reason, you know, reason politics gets so hot in a, in a, in a city is because it's so distinctly personal to people. But I think knowing that everybody is actually of pretty goodwill would, would make a huge difference.
Do you have some, anything as a passion, some things you've talked about or something else, a passion about the city that's important to you?
I mean, I, I really, I like, I believe that growth is going to happen inevitably. So I love the idea of growth that, that reflects the beauty that people want to sustain, you know, because we know there's going to be more people coming. We know that we're going to have to house them. So how do we do that such that, such that people continue to be very happy with what this city looks like and how it feels and whether it keeps that, that, um, you know, all those particulars of the, of the, you know, we're a grounded city, we're all these different things, you know, actually reflecting that instead of accidentally, which is what will happen in, in a vacuum is, and one guy won't make that much of a difference, but, but I'd love to be a part of that.
If you could make one improvement in the city, what would it be?
Gosh.
Just one? The top most, the most important?
I mean, the, I've had, I've had a really good time and I don't have to drive into Denver. So it's not, um, so to me, I'd have to defer to the thing that people howl about the most. That, you know, what were, what were there in that, that survey that you had recently, people's biggest value was like just being safe. But the thing that they wanted to change the most was traffic, you know. So, and if you don't have to actually do that, if you're lucky enough to like work from home and, and like a lot of us have during the pandemic, you don't notice how painful it continues to be, you know, at, at Mineral and Santa Fe. So figuring out how to solve that really, really thorny problem is, um, is, is huge. You know, there's another interesting one, uh, Heritage, right? Like around Heritage High School. I, I live on Fremont, which is a thoroughfare to get to Heritage every morning. Something in the world, just is the way it is. But if you actually live next to Heritage High School, you have cars in front of your house all morning. And, um, we have had public meetings where citizens will call in and say, what do I do about these cars in front of my house? And I think, you know, the community development answer is, well, maybe people shouldn't be driving to Heritage so much and maybe they're like, kids will walk or whatever. Great, but that's not actually reality.
Teenagers that live less than a mile away.
I mean, sure, there should be walking, that's a great idea, but, but, but what's the policy? Not the, not the what's the wish, but what's the policy that we're going to do? And I have no idea, but it's a, it's an interesting topic.
I have a question about the ULUC. Do you think it's going in the right direction from what you know? We haven't seen it yet. We've had a lot of meetings about it. But do you think, you, you talked about it being helpful for your, your garage or whatever.
Yeah.
But do you think it's as a document, it's what the citizens will want?
Well, yes, if you're a citizen who's trying to build something, totally, absolutely. I mean, I, you know, it's very normal, I own property, you know, I have a house, whatever. Whether I can, whether I can put a granny flat behind it, whether, you know, having easy answers to that with, with an updated code that is organized, that's, yes, I can't imagine anybody not wanting that. What, what, what people have a fear of, they're always, people are always more afraid of losing something than, than they're, than they anticipate gaining something. So, um, you know, I know that there will be a big need for communication to explain, listen, you're not going to lose, this is not a, not a Trojan horse way of, of taking something from you as a citizenry. This is actually going to be a tool that'll be better for you.
Thank you.
You were passionate about HPD and I'm glad you are. That's awesome. What's your thoughts on Geneva Village?
Geneva Village, this is the one over here by the Andes, right?
Right there.
Or by the, by the cul-de-sac.
Right here, right behind us, right, right next to us.
Oh.
Or maybe you don't have a feeling.
No, I, I, I've, I've not, uh, so, so I apologize. This is the multi-dwelling unit that's.
Across the street from it.
Yeah, okay. It's those little single stories. Yes.
It's been there for fifty years, I guess.
Oh, oh, this, right. I'm confused, I'm confused as to the direction, yes. Yeah, I, I apologize.
No, no, that's okay, maybe.
I've definitely been there, I have not gained, uh, I don't have an opinion about it, because the funny thing is it's so enveloped in trees.
Sure.
Then unless you're, you know, unless you're paying attention to it, you don't, you, you don't think about it. So if there's a, um, if there's a controversy there, I'm not, I'm not aware of it.
Nothing yet. It's, it's going to be coming forward and probably not this year, but it's, there's going to be some, some things to be discussed on Geneva Village. I'm just curious more or less if you thought that was considered a historic, uh, historic, called a developer.
I get it, I mean, if it was, it would be, how old did you say? It was like the nineteen forties or fifties?
I thought it was the twenties.
It looks like something out of a Dick Tracy serial. I mean, it, it's a.
The lodges, a lot of it, so lodges older.
The lodges.
We're going to get up to Google here.
What is that, um, what's the, forgive me, but what's the little, there's a, a little historic motel next to the ACC. Do you know what that's called? I can't remember.
It's Evergreen.
Ah, yes.
Yeah.
And it's, that place, it clearly is historic. I mean, it's clearly a, you know, a.
Forever.
Yeah, exactly. And, um, but I have no opinion yet about, about the knowledge.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll get that information.
We want to know.
Are you aware that we're looking at a couple ballot issues, uh, this November on sales tax?
Yes.
Any thought on that?
My only thought is that, uh, not against the idea, my only, my only thought was I thought it was fascinating that how, how inelastic people's enthusiasm was, where, where you had, without any coaxing, people were enthusiastic about point five and deeply unenthusiastic about point seven five.
Good for you.
Yeah, percent. But I don't know what to make of that. Could you overcome it with advertising? I don't know, you know, but, but if you're talking about, you know, making something like a million bucks, you can't even afford to advertise it. That's the crazy thing, you know, you have, you know, because that, these are not big, no disrespect to dollars, but these are not big dollars we're talking about right now.
I think, like, uh, somebody said earlier, you know, just this thought of tax, I, I, I just drives me crazy, you know? But when you look at our shortfall and you look at a way out of this, this jammer and, um, you know, this to me is one of the easier solutions to try to get on the ballot if we can.
Well, there's another, there's another more comforting aspect of it, which is that you don't have to like it. We, you know, we're called on as creative people to, to embrace what the citizenry is interested in. And they're deeply interested in that sales tax matching the rest of the industry.
Yeah. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
No, no, thank you. Hi, ma'am.
No questions.
Excuse me. All right. Jason, questions?
I'd, I'd be really curious, you know, honestly, what has shocked people the most? Like I had a friend who, who died during COVID, but, but he was a security expert for like Renaissance festivals. And, and I remember I asked him when he was alive, I said, what never ceases to amaze me, amaze you? And, and he always came up with good stories based on that. But you guys have served on council, you know, you have these really well-attended meetings and, and, and I, no BS, I really am impressed by them. I think they're very well-earned. Yes. But what never ceases to amaze you about what people raise their hand about or what people ask about or, or whatever? Do you have anything like that? Like what's been a surprise?
What, what surprises me, well, it, it doesn't surprise me, but yet it does, is that they're trying to sneak this by. When we've done outreach and a lot of other efforts, it's gone on for months, sometimes over a year, and people say, we need to do more study. You're just trying to brush this through. That, that's what surprises me sometimes. Well, again, surprises me, but it doesn't surprise. We, in, in Evergreen Village, we have two parties a year. We put out a letter and it's always the same weekends of every month, of a particular month, each, each party. We put those out, people live there for over twenty years, say, oh, I didn't know it was this weekend.
Yes.
Even though we put out these letters.
It surprises you, but you're used to it.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm surprised that the passion people take over a tree being cut down or a bush that they didn't know about.
Right.
I mean, I've had somebody with the phone screaming at me, they're cutting this down, what are you going to do?
Oh, I, I had her too.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she, yeah, she called all the time.
Yeah, and I was on the phone with Keith and she goes, I can, he goes, I can see her right over there, I'll walk right over to her. They fought away.
Wow.
But not that it surprised me, but I would have never called the council person over the tree.
That lady didn't even live there. She didn't, no?
Huh, interesting. But it's happened to other districts, it's happened, um, since I'm at large, I get people from others there.
She just drives around making sure people are cutting trees.
Uh, Hickory Place, the guy was very upset about the, the trees and all the stuff. But it just, you know, I do bridge the pond and it, it's just interesting. I just didn't expect it.
The passion, right? That's the, that, that's it, is the, is the emotions that runs super hot. Some people once said that they run so hot because the stakes are so small.
I mean, but there's, there's a lot of issues people will email you on or talk to you about as, it happens with all of us. But that's just one that you asking wakes up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, since joining council for me, it's been the staff and, and Mark and how well this city is running. You know, you had heard stories, or at least hired stories prior to joining council and I came in with a little bit of a, uh, you know, kind of wide eye going, I don't see it. I don't know what you guys are talking about, but, um, you know, we have a really dedicated and professional group of people here really working hard to, to get the job done. So that's what I'm most impressed by and what has, has jumped out me is, is our staff and I give Mark and a lot of that credit for, for building what he's built. And, yeah.
I'm surprised by how much energy is spent, or depending on your perspective, misspent on politics at higher levels than local government.
Right.
As from my perspective, so much of where the rubber hits the road in terms of people's quality of life is decided on by administrative processes within the city or by votes in the city council.
Yeah.
Um, everything from, you know, open space and, and infrastructure and land use to certainly more controversial issues. I wish that, um, we heard from more people. I wish that more people had their attention turned to what's happening at our town hall.
Yeah.
About what their politics are.
When they walk up, we know who they are, where they live, how far away they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's so true.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd agree with that too. I have a lot of friends that weren't paying attention, they've got their busy lives, you know, they just don't, they pay, they pay attention to national, but they don't pay attention to the local.
Because it's on TV, no disrespect, but I mean, that's on TV, right?
Exactly, but then I start blah, 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 Adam, and they start blah, blah, blah. And now there's quite a lot of interest in the city of Littleton, which is fantastic, because like you said, there's a lot of creative people and they're from, they're not, they weren't born and raised here. They moved here from someplace else and they love the city just as much as we do, but they also are learning a lot, so it's kind of.
Absolutely.
And I, you know, we always think that national politics moves so slow, you know, well, it starts from the local level, right? It doesn't move that fast, it just, it can't, because you have to keep people involved, you have to keep them engaged, you got to do all of these, all of these things, you know? And so it's, it's just, it's slower, you know? And, but that's okay, because hopefully that drives some people in along, you know, they become more engaged, so, yeah.
And I think over the last couple of years, and you've been around for a little on YouTube and around, it's, it hasn't been as involved with this, the city folks, uh, or citizens. You know, they really haven't had any big stuff. Wouldn't you agree?
Not like there used to be.
Not like there used to be.
But part of the difference is that staff is very competent now.
Oh, things were jacked up for a while.
And we had some major problems before.
And, and citizens didn't realize that. It's one, yeah, so those are surprising things.
Yeah.
Nice, nice job turning it around for you interviewing us.
Thank you.
That's a good question, that's a good question.
I appreciate it.
Any others?
Uh, well, I mean, you talked about the time commitment, which, which as an honest broker is like the biggest thing for anybody to think about, right? Because, because it's the only thing that we can't get back. But, uh, but, but honestly, that sounds, you know, I, I just think it, it sounds like a blast. I'm not trying to, but I'm a nerd, I mean, so.
Can you read fast or, or do you like to read?
I have to read. Yeah, 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 no, that's.
It depends on reading, so that, it's, it depends how quickly you read or quickly you absorb.
Sure.
Can impact how much.
But I, but I understand you'll need to, I mean, half of my, law school you couldn't get away with. College you could literally get away with, like showing up in class and then doing the reading in the five minutes while people are there. But, but no, I'll, I'll do the homework, that doesn't, that doesn't bother me.
But the nice thing is too, is if you, if you have questions, you, you really don't have knowledge about whatever we're in, whatever's on our agenda, you can call us as staff.
That's really, that's really good.
And they will walk you through it, they are so amazing.
Yeah.
So amazing.
I think it also depends how you define the time commitment. Right, of course, there's attending meetings and reading your packet and taking calls and emails from constituents and going to the meet and greets and all this kinda stuff, but, um, for me, I, I, I get the sense that depending on the vote, we're all maybe this way sometimes, but I don't want to speak for anybody else, it's hard to walk away from it. And you think, what's the right thing, do I do the right things, that's the wrong thing? You know, we all turn in on city council a lot of the time.
Yeah.
Which I think is expected, you know, and when I don't love it.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, oh, good, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I just think you can also spend more time on the things you want to and be more efficient with your time on other things. For example, I'm a liaison for HPB and I was on HPB for a very long time, so I kind of know it a little bit, so I can just check in once every while, where I'm a liaison for NextGen, I'm in there every meeting, helping, emails, talking, so it's because I'm interested, maybe I spend more time on that and maybe this is a little easier for me because I'm familiar.
But you're describing an efficient, and, and efficiency where you already know that stuff and so, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a useful, uh, spending of your time to micromanage.
I, 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 I see you support, and, and you have a lot of leeway yourself. I mean, nobody's saying, well, did you do this and did you, I mean, there's certain things that are expected, like attending a meeting, but nobody's micromanaging.
And I think the discussed point too, where it's almost like you can't get off your mind, like today I met with a group of people, six people, or seven people, and then Friday, no, and I got a call today and can meet with another group on Friday. You know, so it's, there's a lot that you end up throwing into your day when you think, hey, I got this day off. It don't work that way.
I understood, yeah. No, but honestly, I'm, I'm actually really excited about that. I, I, I spent a number of years doing nothing but business and publishing and stuff like that and, and now I really want to, there's not enough people involved, so the great, the good flip of that is that, is that one person can sort of edge something in one way or another. You know, and I think as long as, as, as I keep the lodestar of, am I substituting my own values or am I listening to the values of the community? Then you know that whether you disagree with fellow council, um, you're still going to make choices that will be at least defensible. So.
Yeah, cool. Well, Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm getting, you too.
Yeah, we gotta break. We gotta, we gotta leave five minutes, man.
Joe.
Hey, take care of her.
Bye.
Oh, yes, please. It's all your, Jason, listen.
I don't know if it's in Washington, I'm not sure where. What school is that?
You're thinking of, um,
What, what school?
The, the black school. Yeah, it's not that one.
Or what's the name of?
Yeah, Howard.
Oh, Howard, yes.
Yeah, Howard is, that's in Washington DC.
Is it DC? Oh, I thought it was in South Florida.
I've never talked to anyone with the Howard.
No.
And Brad was the same way, it's Padilla. Alabama, same way?
Alabama.
Alright. Who is it? Gretchen is next, alright?
Do you know Gretchen?
I don't.
I don't know at all.
I bet, does something about the name.
I think we interviewed her for boards and committees.
Did we?
It was Zoom, so.
I said, we had a Gretchen, but I don't. Keep driving.
How's it feel to be back in a room with people?
It's, you know, it's, it's just like no time passed in a way, but they're being back in this room, it's just.
I know, when, when we all got on the dais, we were all like almost giddy.
Have you been out there?
Uh, before we opened up again, yes, when it was still under.
Yeah, it was, it was just a good feeling, just kinda get up there and, and that was when we were barely coming out of our rooms and stuff, so it's kinda like.
Yeah. Just good.
In the, um, application, did we ask people to read the city council legislative rules?
No, it's just an applicant to fill out, uh, yeah, I wanna apply for.
Yeah, we should, should, we're gonna ask the question, we should, I guess, have them do that.
Why not, uh?
Or at least.
Yeah.
Kind of a setup question.
It feels like a gotcha.
Yeah. But it's not only so much a gotcha, it's like, are you paying attention? Cause they're like, well, Jason and Mark, they both, while they don't know it is that, they did read it because they were on boards and commissions and they were, they did have to read them when they were first on those things.
Right.
Do you think that's too much of a gotcha question, question?
I'd like to say no.
Unless, unless we said, you know, be prepared.
Why don't I just remove it then? Yeah, I think it was okay, it was not too bad.
I think.
But yeah, I wanted to just take that out. Yeah, cause that kinda starts it out on a kinda.
It, it does, yeah, you failed already, wow.
Seriously, dude? Seriously? Wake up, Shigga, I got something to wake you up.
It's warming up.
It is, I almost wore a vest, why they do it?
It's gonna get warmer.
Instead, I just went type of shirt.
I thought airflow is supposed to be perfect in this building.
Not in this part, they didn't do it in this part. The council chamber is so much better. You can actually hear, uh, you're during a study session. But you are on Zoom, how could you hear during a study session? Cause there, we don't have a speaker in front of us. It's, and it's, it's like the other conference room, if you remember, had this thing in the ceiling, well, sort of this, but it's way higher up there and, uh, doesn't appear to be an issue.
That is good.
Yeah, but yet we have mics for regular meetings. I was saying that last night, we're like, like at study session, we didn't have microphones, cause of the ones on the ceiling, but yet at a regular meetings, we have a microphone. I don't know why, it just kinda dawned on me last night when we were there. No, you mentioned politics, you know, that within, I guess, the city type stuff, that it used to be real. I love it, it sucks, it was. And then YouTube came in on the tail end, but it's, it was cleaning up at that point, but.
Oh, yeah, it's very.
And then, then you have citizens that are totally like, oh, I can't believe you did that.
You said that.
Was it painful? Well, before I got it fixed. I haven't heard of it, I've heard. Yeah. I have shoulders, I have bones. This is my fourth joint work, this is, oh my goodness.
Big Robert?
I have my original, I don't know what cuts it. Original's better.
Seven thirty, we got returning, seven thirty.
This feels so weird being without a mask, I know.
It was so weird having a mask. I'm just the opposite. Well, thanks for joining us.
Yes, thank you.
Good to see you live.
Yes.
Because you interviewed for a board.
I did.
Yeah, and I saw it, oh, I recognize you now, yeah, okay.
Which board was it? The housing, the social.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, well, we have about thirty minutes, so what else, just go through a few questions. And, and council, by the way, I dropped the first question, uh, on the legislative rules.
Oh, you did?
Alright, I dropped that question. So, uh, so I'm gonna go through and then, uh, give you a chance to hear what else is questions and then you can ask us.
Sure.
Thank you for joining us, alright, you're all cool. Alright, in your opinion, what is the primary role of city council?
To be good stewards for the people.
Okay. A weekly time commitment, not including council meetings, uh, to read materials, to attend outside meetings is approximately ten, twenty hours a week, uh, plus or minus, depending on the week, uh, meetings during the day sometimes, meeting in the evening. Are you willing to, and available, to commit the necessary time to be an effective council member?
Absolutely, um, I have some flexibility with my job, during the day can be difficult just because of my day job. I, you know, I work at All Health Network, kind of across the street, I run groups during the day. I do have some flexibility though, if I have enough advance. And in the evenings, absolutely, I do see private clients in the evenings, but once I know kind of set schedule, I can transition them to different days. And I work four times, so I'm actually off on Fridays. Also a time when I see clients, but it's also a time when I'm able to meet with groups, community groups, things like that. I'm happy to do that and I love doing that.
Ah, cool. Are you willing to attend council meetings and other events in person?
Yeah, absolutely, this feels so good.
I know, I know.
So weird.
We were just talking about that, I love that it is. Of, of the personal and professional skills that you have, what is the most essential and beneficial skill that you would bring to council?
As, as, as a result of my professional training as a therapist, I have a lot of really good de-escalation skills in conflict management. I mean, that just shows up in any kind of group dynamic, whether it's the own council or, you know, liaising or interacting with other citizens or other people that come in, I think conflict just arises and that's what I do, gosh, thirty hours a week. Right, I do, I do three hour groups, so I run very long groups. And that's, and I actually kinda love it, like that's where real growth happens, is when we can navigate conflict. And then, of course, the crisis work that I do on the side, that's also a lot of de-escalation and managing people and recognizing signs before it gets to a point of major conflict.
Huh, cool. Are you familiar with the Littleton building codes?
I've started to read through them and those are a lot of letters in those codes.
Yes, there are.
And I, as I mentioned in my letter of intent, I had to read through a lot of those designations multiple of times, cause they seem the same to me.
Yeah.
I'm like, where is the nuance, where is the difference, what's attached, what's not attached? And then just in, you know, some of the revised, I think proposals too, and starting to navigate and understand, um, the reasoning behind all of those.
A significant council activity during the next six months is the unified land use code. Um, what is your current understanding of those codes?
They're complicated.
Yes.
Um, I actually just watched one of the March city council meetings that kind of outlined what some of those proposals were, which I think simplified at least the direction, I mean, aside from the question of, you know, what's affordable. Um, I think the city already has some direction in how to revise those. Um, and so, and one thing I noticed is this is, this city staff is really good at plans. Like they're really good at putting together a lot of data, um, and so that's where I would go to read and to figure out what's on the table. So it doesn't sound like I would have to be the expert, that they're the experts and it's mattering, a matter of just understanding and sifting through all the different possibilities. Um, and it sounds like mixed use is kind of where the direction we're going, more mixed use. And, you know, being able to vote on that, that would be my major understanding, that's what we want.
We do have an actual staff too. Uh, please describe your community involvement and or relevant experience over the last five years, when you can, what, here, about three?
Mm-hmm, yep. Uh, COVID definitely put a damper, um, I love community, community engagement is one of my jams. I did a lot when I was in Washington DC. I did just a lot of service, a lot of community service activities. I worked a lot with the homeless community, um, and that was something, actually right before COVID started was, was on my radar, was volunteering at nursing homes back in Washington, I reached out to some in the Littleton and Lakewood area. And then COVID hit and of course volunteers were like, no more. And with nursing homes, I used to, I would play, so I had a piano player or a guitarist and we'd go in and we would just kind of sing to the residents and they're a great audience because if you mess up, they don't care, they're just like glad to see young people, you know, and I would just do like forties or fifties songs, you know, show teams. Um, but I would try to, I worked with several different communities, I worked for the Lighthouse, a blind organization as well, which is something that's really interesting to me, knowing that the, one of the blind communities is located here in Littleton. Um, and I have some experience back in DC, working within that community. And I actually was matched, I volunteered for probably four years actually with, uh, a person who was vision impaired. And she had a great job, she had, you know, she could support herself, but it's amazing the little things that some of these folks can't do. Um, one of the things that drew my attention was just the ADA and wanting to update some of those codes, because it's people like her and I, again, those of us who are more abled, don't even see that as being an issue, but just having that unequal sidewalk, I mean, she, cause she sprained her ankle, you know, it's very dangerous. Um, so just working with different groups of people is really fun for me and I love liaising with them, it's great.
Ah, nice, nice. Uh, are you familiar with the city budget?
Uh, definitely the deficit. Yeah, um, it sounds like it's dire, um, maybe dire is too strong of a word, it sounds like it's headed in a difficult place if action isn't taken now.
Right, yeah, it's, it's, it's heading, we're not deficit, but yeah, it's, it's, it's looking rough. Uh, please identify what you believe are the top two issues facing the city.
Well, I think addressing the revenue, I think is number one, cause we can't do any of the wonderful things we wanna do, um, unless we have the money to do it. And number two, I think is housing, that's been, again, working with the homeless and working with people who just wanna be first in home buyers. This area especially, I've seen a flock of people like myself, youngest people flocking here because of the mountains and the beautiful weather and probably a little bit of the marijuana, um, and it's really hard seeing those prices go up, but we really can't afford anything to buy at this point and I would like to see that change.
Ah, alright, that's it for my questions, uh, you'll have an opportunity at the end to ask us some questions soon. We'll go around the table. Um, Gretchen, tell us a story, any story you want to, that gives us a glimpse of who you are.
That's a great question.
I would normally tell them that, but I don't like to compliment them in front of people. Why not, Jerry?
I would draw on my sort of Brene Brown, right, as a sort of storyteller, when she was, you know, another social worker, um, who's definitely inspired me a lot. Um, I think someone who always felt a little different, a little bit on the outskirts, come from a very lovely and amazing conservative family. Um, my, I think that's also one of the perspectives I bring, right, is I went to Brigham Young University for my undergraduate and I went to Howard University for my masters, two very different communities that I'm very comfortable in and that I love both a lot. And I think that is part of me, having both of that, we call it dialectics therapy, right, two opposites. But actually both can be true. And we see that sort of paradox show up across the site. So I think navigating that certainly the last fifteen years has been critical, um, for me in trying to figure out where I belong. And helping other people to feel like they belong, belonging is, is a core value, right? We're born with that, that babies are hardwired to, to belong. And I think a lot of my community work and my quest has been to find a place and value. What can I bring and I, I think I've seen the most success probably Scott, um, in finding connection with other people and connecting with other people, definitely my twenties. You know, by the time I finished, finished school and I, I was, I, when I graduated from BYU, um, I actually was gonna go to medical school. And I was, had applied to medical schools and I interned in Washington DC my last semester of undergrad. Fell in love, fell in love with policy, this access to care idea, um, and so I totally changed trajectories from medical school to something more, um, probably policy driven. So I went back to Illinois, I was living with my mom at the time, trying to figure out what I wanted. Um, and it took, I think, a lot to figure out, and I will say, if I got applied to law school, like I was trying to find myself, right? Where, where can I be of most value? And it took me settling in Washington DC, working in different jobs, realizing what I didn't like versus what I liked. And then finally, by the time I hit thirty, I was able to like land on social work, because that's with the people, right? That is with people figuring out what their problems and issues are, finding ways to support them, finding ways to remove some of the barriers. The difference between a social worker and like a licensed professional counselor, like an LPC, is advocacy. Like that's in our code, that's in our training, how do I advocate for you? And it's more of a wraparound approach and I think that's been part of who I am and probably what brings out the best in me.
Thank you.
Good question.
Hi Gretchen, thank you so much for coming tonight for applying. Um, I'm asking this question of everybody, um, do you have any intentions of running for council in the fall, in November?
I think I definitely wanna run for office someday, it's always been on my radar when I, you know, grow up, right? Like, or settle down, which definitely in my twenties was so far away. I would do that after I had children and, you know, that's, that was my picture. And, uh, you know, in Washington DC certainly never felt like I was settled or rooted and nobody in DC feels that way. It wasn't until I made the decision to move out here where I actually felt rooted. Um, and I really never considered now as maybe the time to do it, but who knows?
And if you, if you did run, do you foresee this impacting, serving on council, no, running for council impacting your ability to, um, to serve on council? Um, as it's a pretty big job to run for.
Yeah, I could absolutely see it being, maybe having some conflict there, but I also could see it being incredibly advantageous. I mean, one of my strengths is that I'm a really good ambassador, a good surrogate for talking about issues that are important. Um, and I think when we're campaigning, and I mean, I've worked on campaigns, I've never been the person actually campaigning, but I've worked on campaigns and kind of been that person who are talking the, the candidate up. Um, and if there's gonna be taxes, tax rates on the ballot, I think someone's gonna be talking to people about that and talking about it in a positive way, framing it along the messaging that this council wants. And I think anybody running in the fall who has some RE experience on council will be able to share that with the voters.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, is there something you hope to accomplish if you were appointed to council for the next?
Is there something you hope to accomplish if you were appointed to council for the next few months?
Selfishly, I want to see if I like it. There's this very small chance I might get and, and be like, alright, I guess this isn't in my future running for office. Maybe it's not what I want to do and I'll redirect my professional efforts elsewhere. So it's for me, it's kind of a litmus test to see if this idea that I've had, which is very vague, right, running for office someday. So the nitty gritty, doing the stuff behind the curtain, what's it really like? And do I enjoy that work enough to, is it fulfilling enough for me to want to keep moving forward?
Um, do you have a passion when it comes to something about the city?
I have two. It was that candy.
Her test comes back tomorrow.
Remember the beginning of that COVID era?
Grocery store with a mask on and you're just like, ah.
Uh, so two things that I really love about, well, that I'm passionate about, one is definitely the housing keys. Like, I just think that's necessary in our town. And two is, I'm from the Midwest, I'm from the Chicago suburbs. I love the suburb life like that, and I resisted that probably all in my twenties, right? I wanted to be a city girl. Um, I lived in DC proper, like I, you know, I didn't want some suburban address. But, you know, when I started working in All Health Network and it's always looking nearby at places to live, like I actually just fell in love with the downtown area. It reminded me of home. Crystal Lake, that's where I'm from, um, which is like the north northwest suburb in Illinois. And just like the charm, it was just charming, absolutely charming. And I want to see that flourish. I want to see that grow. I want to add, you know, some more of that city type stuff into that atmosphere. As a musician, I've played in a lot of venues. I've played in outdoor venues. Those are the most fun. And I would love to see more of that. We already have a little bit of that here in our downtown and some of the other areas, but there is so much space to scale that up. And I think people, especially in the next two years, people are so sick of being at home. I think they're ready. And, you know, we saw the roaring twenties, right, came out of the nineteen eighteen, yeah, well, no, it came out of the nineteen eighteen flu, right? Like, so years after that, there's something connecting to that, I think, of like a culture explosion. And I think we're on probably the precipice of that, if it's gonna mimic what happened a hundred years ago. And so I think, I don't know, there could be cool ways to scale that up.
I'll take a culture explosion.
Yeah. It could be the new roaring twenties.
Connection that I hadn't thought of. If you could make one improvement in the city, what would it be?
Probably the puddles.
Oh God, there we go with puddles.
Citizen in that way, we just take our magic wand and just, you know, all that puddles because it's immediate and it's something that I'm thinking about when I go in one.
Um, other than what you mentioned about the UL, UC being complicated and all that stuff, do you think it's going in the right direction? Do you think it reflects what city council, uh, what the city needs?
Absolutely. I think one of the things that I could bring to city council is a different perspective. You know, I'm young, I'm single, I'm a professional, um, I'm on that beginning end of a millennial. And I'm a renter right now. So like, some of those homes are very attractive, right? The idea we don't want, and I'm speaking definitely generally for millennials, I guess, right? We don't want big homes, we don't want big yards, right? We want, we want minimalism is kind of, um, I guess what we're into.
Till you get a bunch of ducks running around your yard and.
No ducks.
Dog pile.
Yeah, we don't.
I want a big yard I can fill with.
That's the
That's right, that's right.
That's very different a little bit with Colorado, right? Because we want our dogs and places. And even that, as long as we have a park we can take them to or walk them to.
You gotta have a garden too, right?
Please, it's chicken. The more the better.
Farmers.
That's right.
So yeah, I think it's going in the right direction. I think, you know, and then with that gap of what, sixty-five hundred homes being built in the next fifteen years? And I think there is only so much land that can be developed. And so I think it's a smart move. And I think they will be filled, you know, it's very like field of dreams, you know, if you build it, they will come, right? They're already here, they're just looking for ways. And because we're so close to Denver, and I think it's really cute when people complain about the congestion here. I, I'm just like, really? I mean, I used to live twenty minutes from downtown. It would take me an hour and a half to get to work, I mean, by bus. Um, and so very different, um, here. And so that's very attractive, right? So when you're twenty, twenty-five minutes away from downtown Den- Denver, and then there's already some other little mini metropolises. And Littleton certainly has the capability to do that. So, yeah, I think it's going in the right direction. I think the idea of just creating smaller homes, I think is actually quite brilliant. I looked at tiny home communities because I thought that was so adorable. And there's just, there's a couple popping up throughout the area, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thanks. And you mentioned in your cover letter being a fresh perspective to see council. You mentioned young, single, you know, renter. But I mean, I look at Scott, I look at Kelly, I, you know, we have some young people here. I think they bring a great perspective.
Thank you, Pat.
But, but, uh, you know, when I, when I think of city council, I think of, you know, we, we have next gen for, you know, to give us some direction on, on, uh, on new perspective. Do you have any other thoughts on what other perspective you can bring? For example, I think of Chicago, you know, I was born in Chicago but left Chicago when I was really young. But I look at the way their city is run and it's absolute disaster. Is that that perspective you're looking to bring?
No.
Okay, good.
My four months in the state legislature in Illinois was a real, was a disaster. That's a great way to put it. I had a lot of ethical concerns about, and that was another way of reasons I left that position.
Right.
Because of the ethic, and that's just
Did she work for Mayor Daley?
I worked for Speaker Madigan.
Okay.
Now, he's recently been ousted after like thirty years or something in that position. Um, so maybe they'll see some change.
Yeah, that's a big say. I mean, it's tough to compare Chicago to Littleton, but, yeah, that's.
Not really fair comparison. Well, I do think, you know, yes, you have that, you know, next gen committee for sure. But I think I'm also a mental health professional, so I have my pulse kind of on the mental health needs of our community.
Of the city council.
Of our community. No diagnosing will happen.
No more than comments.
But I think that's important, right? I sit with hours with people telling me what's going on in their lives and what's difficult for them to live the happy, joyful life that they want. And a lot of them are Littleton residents.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's a tough time for people out there. Uh, you mentioned taxes and are you familiar with, uh, the conversation we had last night by any chance of, uh, regarding sales tax?
I watched some of the, the polling that they did and that's very promising.
Yeah, are you, so that sounds like you would, or did you happen to take that survey? Were you part of that?
I was not part of the survey.
Okay.
But those results are cool. I wish they were higher, but it sounds like with the messaging that, um, they could push over into a more comfortable tension.
So you would be in favor of that, it sounds like, uh, probably all through taxes?
I don't know necessarily the highest one because just that seemed a little bit more difficult in terms of to get the Yeah.
Oh, no, no, yeah, just, just whether or not.
Oh, you meant the marijuana, the lodging and
Yeah, we haven't even talked about a percentage on sales tax. It was just, you know, I think we guys just start with, do we think we can raise sales tax? And then we'll figure out a percent, but, um.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Yeah, awesome, okay. That's all I have.
Alright, and what do you have for us?
Well, I'm curious, what's, what has been your dynamic working together with each other?
Uh, it's been good. And, and I think we've gotten a lot done as a council this past year. Uh, we, we wrapped up the code, was that before the new council, uh, Conplan?
The Conplan.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, yeah. So then now we're working on these codes and we're striving to get it done by November before the election. So that, that's our biggest thing right now. That does take, uh, probably most of our time.
I think we're like an old family, you know, we have our ups and downs, you know, we have, we all have our opinions and we're all you know, we're gonna, we're gonna express them and we're gonna vote accordingly, right?
I would say it was a little difficult though because I was new and it's like three months after coming on the council. Well, I got a concussion without, but then COVID hit and we haven't been together.
It's our first time, yeah.
These are like our first couple weeks that we've been coming in, yeah.
I wonder if you've noticed a difference just between being together versus virtual?
I hope, I hope, I hope there's a difference.
You can't, you can't find out about the person walking to the car, you know? Where did you go on vacation, you know?
Good point, yeah. Because it's like giving, you know, I give Scott, you know, grief or we can give each other grief. Can't do that so much on a Zoom.
Yeah, you don't do, because you're on camera and you can't.
Well, you just did okay.
I mean, you can have a, you can, we call each other up, but it's usually about something to do with council and it's just nice to be able to just learn a little bit about somebody's life. Walking out the door right before council meeting.
Yeah, I've definitely seen that similar phenomenon.
We're not Westminster. Did you see Brumfield that Mayor just resigned to?
No.
There's stuff going on out there.
Westminster had a resignation, so they were down to six members and we had to take a protest and it took them six hours and seventy
Seventy-eight votes.
So that's not the culture of this council.
Yeah, we have somebody, one of us will eventually say, ah, I quit.
Gretchen, you're exactly right about staff and understanding different aspects of, you know, how deep you have to get into it. You know, we're up here, we're, we're setting policy and then, and then the staff is executing what, we're giving direction.
They do the real work.
And they do the real work. And so it really just, we just need a
Option A or option B?
Yeah.
I mean, kind of a nutshell.
What do you think is gonna be the most difficult for filling this appointment for just these next six months? What's this person's case?
We have very candidates. We really do. We have, like, was it eight candidates, like this?
What about when that person gets in? What's gonna be the most difficult? Because they're at a gross disadvantage. And you've all have been working together for a while and are familiar with these issues.
I think staff will be very, very instrumental in helping get that person up and running as well as all of us.
I don't think it's a group dynamic thing. I think it's learning how to do the job and, and
As an individual?
Yeah, trying to understand which
But I wouldn't say you have to be perfect at it. You know what I mean? You can't, like, you can't, you just cannot learn everything in five months. I mean, that's essentially what it is. It's a five month appointment. So you just
Do the best you can.
Do the best you can and don't put a lot of pressure on yourself.
Well, I think that's definitely a blind spot, right, is that I don't have a lot of familiarity with this stuff. It's been really in the last couple of weeks I've tried to dig in and do research. I'm blessed that I, I think the, the city is very transparent with all their stuff. Like, I'm very impressed with that. The researcher in me is like, ooh. Tell me where all this stuff is. This is great. I have complete access to it. It's a little dense and kind of challenging, I think, to navigate, but, um, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, well, yeah, being like council, I like being on a wrestling team, you know. You're an individual, but you're a team. But you gotta go out there and you gotta do your part.
Yeah, is that a challenge if folks come to a meeting and they haven't done their part? I mean, I would think that would be difficult.
Everybody does their part. Back off.
See, we can't do that over Zoom.
It's hard to retone.
Yeah, I know.
Or from the dice.
Or with a mask on, ah.
Well, those are the major questions I have. I'm just grateful that I got to meet some of you and, uh, just, yeah.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, and good luck with the rest of the session.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Hi, how's it going?
Yeah, it's great.
Hey, Pete.
Hi, Pipi. How's everybody?
You're ready? I've removed my mask. Yeah, yeah. Cool, I don't
Hey, world, thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you. Nice opportunity. Alright, alright, we got about thirty minutes and I'll go through a few easy, just kind of lay out the situation that we would go around a horn. It'll give you a chance to, uh, ask questions at the end. In your opinion, what are the primary roles, role of the city council?
Well, obviously to, uh, govern the city, to look after the affairs of the city, to chart the course and the direction and the future, to, uh, maintain what's currently here, to be available to the public, to have some, some interface with the public, obviously, get some input. To be open-minded and fair in judgments and, and deliberations and those type of things.
Dan, you're, you're on one of
Board of Appeals. I was previously on the, uh, Board of Appeals.
Uh, the time commitment, not including city council meetings, uh, to read the material and and to attend meetings outside. It's about approximately ten to twenty hours a week, um, sometimes more, sometimes less. And sometimes meetings during the day, sometimes during the evening. Uh, are you willing and available to commit the necessary time to be a regular council member?
Yes, ten to twenty hours a week, yes, absolutely. I, uh, I asked Colleen ahead of time, I said, can you send me the, what are the requirements? What are the expectations? What, you know, what are you looking for? She said, of course, to be, participate in meetings, ask questions, you know, be a voting member of the council. Do the meet and greets, to be involved in the community, those type of things, to participate in general.
As best you can, of course, it's not one hundred percent of that. Are you willing to attend meetings and other events outs, in person?
Sure.
Of the, of the personal and professional skills you have, one of the most essential or beneficial skills that you bring to council?
I call it a skill. Maybe it's, uh, my ability to interpret data and co- arrive at conclusions. I think a fair conclusion, just looking at the, the data that's presented and to understand what that means in context. And to come to a conclusion from there. I, uh, I see you got my resume and I spent a long time in oil and gas and doing statistical analysis. It's, uh, always interesting to see what people do with data. That's what I, I most recently, when I had my little consulting company, I term this as, uh, data scientist. So one of the best examples I ever heard that if you just take data and you don't know what the context of the data, it's easy to go astray. Where if you have, for example, fifty men and fifty women, a hundred people, you could easily draw the conclusion that the average person has one testicle. But you have to have some context or some, something. I mean, mathematically, that all works out fine, but
Jerry's gonna use that. Scott's gonna be away already. Are you familiar with the Littleton, uh, building codes?
Somewhat, yes. I mean, to the extent that I've been involved and, uh, when I signed the Board of Appeals, of course, we dealt with some of that. And I did a remodel of my house six or seven years ago now. So I got involved with the building department permits and setbacks and variances and all those things.
Does Liquor Authority, do they deal much with codes?
I'm sorry?
Liquor Authority? Our charter?
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys deal with codes there.
We're not building codes.
We're not building codes. Uh, but codes?
Codes, yes.
A, a significant council activity during the next six months will be the unified land use codes. What is your current understanding of those codes?
I, I, you know, one thing I was thinking about this whole, this whole process here, and I think in fairness, I need to say I don't come in with any agenda. It's not like, um, that's the best thing, should always do that, never do that. I, I, I approach it with more of an open mind and say, okay, what's, what are the options? What are we, what are we up against here? So, um, obviously land use codes are mandatory. We're gonna need to have those, obviously. But I don't have an opinion either way at this point.
Please describe to us your community involvement and/or relevant experience over the last five years.
Uh, tonight I was running a little late, actually. I was running to get over here. We had a Western Welcome Week order meeting tonight. So I've been with Western Welcome Week for six years now. It's my seventh year, so I'm planning, scheming ahead. And, uh, interestingly, partners with the city, again, we're gonna do the concert and fireworks. The city's gonna provide the concert. Western Welcome Week's gonna have the fireworks over at Stern Park this year.
Are they?
It's gonna work, we'll work in conjunction with the city.
We haven't been prayed.
Oh, yes, yes. A lot of marching bands involved. Um, additionally, I'm involved with the Elks Lodge. It's probably more parallel to what, what happens here than things at Western Welcome Week. I'm a trustee at the Elks, so in that I'm responsible for the operation of the organization, maybe to financially, for the physical building, for the, you know, behavior of the people in there, rules, uh, pricing at the, at the social quarters, the whole gamut of things. Right now I have a big project replacing the HVAC system, so that's what our current focus is now. We just converted that parking lot on South, South of Alamo to a paid lot over there, the one that used to be at least for a viewhouse.
And we're gonna be able to keep that eight back, uh, plus an eighty grand? What's that?
We'll see.
I know.
I hope so.
I know, that's all we got.
Permits get involved. We have to get permits out of here.
I can help with that.
Are you familiar with the city budget?
Somewhat. I know, uh, Somewhat. I know, you know, budgets work, of course, but yeah, somewhat. You know, I, I always read the Littleton report and I keep up on all those things. Line by line, I sat, a couple of years ago, I sat in the, the meeting when, when you, you were mayor still. We're going through to see how much money was going to get divvied out to different organizations and different groups and I came as, Cindy Hathaway and myself came for Western Welcome Week to see. Or whatever. Uh, please identify what you believe the top two issues are facing Littleton. Uh, one thing that always comes to mind is affordable housing and traffic. I mean, the two things that I see. Housing prices are, it's, it's not unique to Littleton, but it's uh, you know, of course, all over the country. But as far as affordable housing and traffic is just um is something needs to be dealt with and I'm not so sure that building more and building bigger roads and more roads and bigger roads is the answer to the traffic. But again, I don't have an exact agenda, how to, how to correct that or what to do about it or how the, what all the options are, but I sit more and more traffic on a routine basis. So we build more on Sterling Branch and those places come around and. Alright, you'll have a chance to ask us some questions. We'll run the room.
My turn?
Yeah.
Thanks for applying. Thanks for spending time with us. I think that you're unique among the applicants and that you own a business in the city. And so I want to ask you, what have been some of your same experiences as a business owner interacting with the city and how might that inform your perspective if you were appointed to council?
You know, the community development group, Diddy Stevens and her crew has been wonderful. When I first got started, Eric Urban and, and those people down there, they were tremendous. They were a huge leg up and not only the website, but sign permits and marketing materials and those type of things. And then I was very fortunate also to get a grant from the city. We got a, I think it was two thousand dollars last year for a small business grant from, from Littleton, which was very, very welcome and well received. So the city's been wonderful as far as doing business. And, and uh yeah, they did nothing but support it.
Well, I'm grateful that your business is here. We patronize your business. My wife's in there all the time for.
Is she? Yeah.
Yeah, pine shavings and chicken food and yeah, anyway, thanks.
The, the melon ranch.
Well, thank you for that, yeah.
Do you own Lewis and Clark and Lewis and Bark or just Lewis and Clark?
Well, I'm selling Lewis and Bark. So I had, I had both done for a while and short story is I had a, a partner and it didn't work out. So I told people she quit. She borrowed the money from me to buy Lewis and Bark years ago. So she quit. She quit paying me. She quit paying sales tax. She quit paying payroll tax. She quit depositing cash. So she, she quit and then it all fell back on me. So then I had both stories. So I realized I couldn't do both of them. So there's a guy Frank who's buying Lewis and Bark.
Okay, that wasn't my question, sorry. My question is um are you, do you, do you have any intentions of running for city council in November for one of the open positions?
Well, you know, I thought this is a wonderful opportunity to see, you know, given five or six months to see how it is. And that's why I thought this was a perfect opportunity to step up and say, yes, I can do this and see what it's going to be like, see if it's something that's suited for me, if it's going to be a good fit. So I thought it was a, just a wonderful chance to go and, and see what it's all about.
And if you were to run, do you foresee that impeding your ability to serve on council? Do you foresee any conflict in that? Cause it's a pretty big job to run.
To run for, that's because I thought about those old campaign things. That's what I'm saying. This is much better than.
A lot easier.
Yard sign. This is the way to get in, I think.
Cheaper too.
Yeah, I don't know if it'd be a problem. I, I wouldn't put it as a problem. I, I, I think we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there and see if I'm fortunate enough to be selected, to be appointed. See, like this is in, when do you start? September? Campaigning?
Now. I'm starting in May. Figuring out what to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just the season. Thank you. And thanks for coming and thanks for.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Uh, is there something that you hope to accomplish uh during your, if you were appointed, the couple of months on city council? You said you didn't have a agenda, but there's just something.
No, no, not per se, not to say that I'm going to come in and you know, make it where, if you have more than a city lot, you can have more than four chickens in New York. You know those things I know. Kyle, Kyle's a cousin. People down by Heritage High School, that horse property is going to have four chickens and he always said that was silly. But, you know, I don't have an axe to grind or an agenda. I, you know, I just feel like I could participate and contribute in a meaningful manner with what, what comes along.
Is there anything when it comes to the city that you're passionate about, that you're very interested in?
You know, I, I, ever since I've lived in Littleton, since nineteen ninety, I've always loved living here. And one of the things I'm certainly passionate about is downtown. I like downtown. Now you know, some of the appeal and the charm, I'm fortunate just to live a five minute walk from here, actually I drove tonight, but you know, just to be this close to downtown and enjoy the amenities. I do like the, the people, the atmosphere, the, the city, the way it's run has been favorable. So I would say though, our downtown is a jewel.
If you could make one improvement in the city, what should it be?
You know, I was excited when I heard about that downtown diagonal parking plan. I like that plan. You know, the one thing I say that and then at the same time, I'm thinking in the back of my mind, it seems like so much emphasis goes towards downtown, the downtown merchants. And then having been a downtown merchant myself, now I'm not being a downtown merchant anymore. Hey, what about me? Where's my little shit? So where's mine? Where's mine? This is chicken. But I, I, I think if we can preserve as, as, as much of the character, particularly downtown.
No, I agree. I think I can. The ULUC, um, do you think that it is, and I, we haven't seen the final one, but they had drafts come out. Do you think it's going in the right direction? Do you think it's going to meet the needs of the citizens and the developers?
Frankly, to me, it seems a little swayed towards the developers, in my opinion. From what I've seen, it seems like it's weighted a little more towards the developers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete, you mentioned downtown. Do you like what's been going on downtown as far as the infill and the slot homes and the different architecture? Or do you think it's, you think we're losing that charm too much?
It wouldn't be my choice to put in those slot homes. And I speak to a lot of people that come in and people ask about my old building, for example. They say, how come you moved? And I just tell them my lease is up. My, my lease ran out and I was there for five years. Well, what are they going to do there? And if I tell them, you know, if they're going to put in a bistro and condos, you know, people are just like, oh condos, more condos, of course, more condos. You know, it's just that kind of reaction from, from people that I, that I visit with. So some things are good, some things are good, some things wouldn't be my first choice. I know I've heard a lot about these, you know, those houses along Santa Fe there.
Right.
I know when I was on the Board of Adjustment, that yellow house, when you were to take Barry, if you kept going right into that yellow house, that guy wanted a variance for parking because his hill was too steep, because it cost him too much to be able to grade it so he'd be able to park on there.
Right. They figured it out?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Um, are you familiar with the potential sales tax we're looking at, potential increase in sales tax?
Yes, yeah.
As a business owner, what's your thought on, on that?
I think it's, I, I mean, it's, it's, I think people understand that. I, I spoke with Sean.
Yeah, oh, you did? Good. So you were part of that survey.
So we, yeah, we talked about that and I.
Good.
I think that's a, a fair thing if I, you know, it's, people have to understand.
And, and did they have to explain lodging tax to you, what that meant?
We talked about lodging tax, yes.
Yeah. But you, did you understand that or did that have to be explained to you?
He mentioned about it, that we don't, Littleton currently doesn't charge lodging tax, correct?
Right.
And then he's talking about, I mean, we discussed about implementing lodging tax.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I think most people get it, uh, that it's not a tax on us, you know, unless we can decide to go spend the night or go hotel, but um, and then of course marijuana tax, any thought on that?
I think that needs plenty of tax.
Alright.
You know, I suppose not, not so much the people drive to Broadway or to Bellevue to, to go to Inglewood Dividing.
Right. Yeah, it's a good point. You don't want to tax yourself out of it to where they're going just up another couple of blocks.
So close, yeah.
Yeah. What's our current tax on that? Like two percent?
On marijuana?
Yeah.
I thought it was like seven or something on it. Yeah, I think it's more than.
Well, we're asking to go up to seven, aren't we? I thought we were two.
I think we can go up to fourteen or something.
Yeah, we set it to seven, we can go to thirteen.
Something.
Yeah, thereabouts, yeah.
I don't need to get into it. I just, I wasn't sure what it was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, man.
Alright, what do you got for us? Like Carol?
No questions.
Well, I'm just excited. If this were to come to fruition, I'd, I'd be excited to do it. I recognize that Colleen and I talked about the licensing authority position would go away, obviously, for obvious reasons. As far as questions, you know, I, I understand about listening, participating, precipitating, participating. You know, coming with an open mind. I think that's the one thing I can, I can offer is an unbiased, open. Like I said, more of a science guy, data driven, kind of a, here's, here's the facts and here's, here's what the conclusion is. You know, I wish, uh, I usually don't tune into study sessions and last night I tuned in to the city council meeting. I was walking my dog and I had my phone and I was listening and then it was the end of the executive session. That's it, meeting's over. But we're all happy and you weren't. I had to listen to that music for, for a while.
They should explain that.
No, no, no. Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, there's some closed captions or something was happening.
It's going to come in.
Well, that's the exact, I should just consume on your phone.
Did you say that?
It does, yeah.
Questions? Still an open question about running in, you know, for a seat if I'm, if I'm fortunate to be chosen. I don't think I'd mount a campaign to, you know, just be the underdog to come in from nowhere, just to say, you know, hey, here's Pete, vote for me. I don't know, I'm not sure if I would do that or not.
That sounds good though.
We've seen worse.
Sounds good. I agree.
You know, some friends of mine always refer to me as the mayor of Littleton, no offense. Now they're like, don't ask Pete, he'll know. He'll know what's going on. He'll know what's going on.
You're more popular. You're on the Liquor Authority.
I know all the places they're going to shut down. Yeah, don't go there anymore. I do have, here's a, off the, not city council related question. Maybe you folks know, somebody I always learned in, when I was a business, that our CEO always told us, if you have a question, don't go and ask the person that you work with about the question. Go find somebody that can give you the answer. But I remember where the Mayfair building used to be next to the cemetery. Do you know what's going to happen over there? Is anybody?
Not that, yeah. They gave the city an option to take a look at buying that, but we didn't have any interest.
We considered it, but it's site up there. I was just curious because I, I just live right over by there and all of a sudden all the dumpsters are gone, the trailers are gone, everything, the pallets, the whole thing is. Thank you. It's all in the pallet.
What are they asking for that? Do you know?
I have no idea. I didn't.
That's a great piece. I, I, you could do something really deep on that piece of property.
That's the cemetery, isn't it?
That's okay.
Neighbors to the south are quiet.
They can be running down the lane.
So you're off of Princeton?
I'm off of Bemis. Bemis and Shepherd.
Okay.
That's where I live. So every year when you get queued up for the Western Welcome Week parade, you guys come by my house.
You don't have to go to the parade. You can just look out the window.
Well, that's my other, that's what I do is Western Welcome Week, so I'm down there at five o'clock in the morning sending this long day to you guys.
When is the parade this year? Do you know?
What, fifteenth is it?
August fifteenth?
Yeah, it's always the second week, though. Is that a Saturday?
Yeah.
August fourteenth?
That's probably. Someone around there. Fourteen, fifteen, something.
Always a great day.
It was a fun day.
Yeah, thank you for your efforts on that.
Okay, well, thank you for coming again.
And with the Elks, as a fellow Elk member.
You guys have like a secret handshake you're going to do on the way out?
Not allowed to show you any of that stuff.
Alright, alright. Alright, Pete.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Turning back to you, Mary Ann. Yeah, thanks again.
Cool. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is this open?
Yeah, please.
She's there.
Huck is already gone.
Yeah.
We're on the last corner.
One corner, yeah, it's a little.
Yeah.
Do you remember the guy SSS who ran for council in?
Oh, sure. They called Coach.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he used to be a, a postman.
His, his, the, his platform was he wanted to be able to smoke downtown.
Hmm, which didn't surprise me.
Yeah, and so when we had the forums, he always got seated next to me. Maybe because alphabetical, but it's true, it's true, well, I want to be able to smoke downtown. That's it.
Pretty simple. Trying to change the small things.
Brought that up today, didn't I?
Yeah, he called me, I think he's in your district. He lives over by Euclid.
Yes.
And he's, he's been going about this parking and parking.
Oh, is that the guy?
I went, Steve, I said, I don't get it. I said, you've got two in your driveway, two in your, in your dri, in your garage, and you've got three cars out in front and you want to park on the corner on whatever that's.
Eu, uh, Euclid.
It's on Euclid?
Yes.
Yeah, I need, I need that parking back. They took it away. I'm like, I disagree. You don't need more parking. And he's like, that's not your priority. And I said, you can cross the park the street. I said, because I drove over there and checked out, he's, he's more of a friend, a poker buddy that we play down, you know, Texas Hold'em. And I said, just what? It's a ten steps across the street. He's like, I want to park on this corner. It's like, well.
You can't.
It's, because he wants to be able to have an eye on his truck.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what he told me.
Yeah.
Who is this? Some guy named Steve. I don't know his.
Steve SSS. E S S C S. He ran for council in seventeen.
Didn't he call you? He calls everybody else?
He didn't call me. I spent the time on his front porch when I was getting paid.
Oh. So you heard a lot?
Uh, I'm trying to think back. I don't even remember what we talked about.
It's cars.
Smoking on the downtown.
Be able to smoke downtown. Had a big wad of keys like janitor.
Oh, yeah, they have, they still do that.
I haven't seen him forever though.
Campaign's the last time I saw him. Four years ago.
Over by Euclid? Yeah, 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 that's got to be him. My vehicle's in front of his house.
Oh, didn't he run? Did he run too?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Carol, how old are you here?
I remember him now.
Four years ago.
He's funny.
If it isn't here exactly eight forty-five, we shut it down.
Exactly.
Off we go.
It's okay to run into a game. You're the new council runner now.
Who's that?
You.
Who's that being?
Running into, just making it on time.
Can you tell my work to please change my schedule?
I did that for eight years.
I would love that. I would love it if you'd tell them. And I'll tell you, two twenty-five is a complete show. Every single day, there's an accident.
Yeah, I can't even.
Every single day.
Yeah, mine was like ten miles, but it really wasn't that bad. I just come down.
Two twenty-five is horrible.
People, yeah, I never had to do the highways. God, I was downtown for over the season.
It's horrible.
Now I never do that. It's a creep. But I was always just barely making it in. Then Corina was the next one.
I will gladly take.
And now it's you. Now it's you.
I will gladly take. I will gladly take, I might show up in my Instagram. See, now I'll turn that to you.
But it's, but I driving in the car to hurry up and get there, I just hate that feeling.
I hate it.
Don't you hate that, just, you're just anxious.
A rush in the morning and a rush in the afternoon, four days a week, and it's like, ugh.
Yeah.
I'm ready to retire.
That's good, I sort of, I thought I did, and then it's back into working.
For the big bucks, too. I was a big name.
Well, we have a business, Mary Pat driving back in, she was like.
Oh, she did? I was like, you're trying to be mayor. What's your business?
That's, we own and manage real estate.
Yeah, when you're saying you were trying to get a hold of a maintenance guy, I thought you had retired.
Yeah, we got 12 employees that can get paid sometimes.
Maintenance guy is definitely. Same as else, care about that, Blanche?
I do.
Are they playing tonight?
Yes, right now.
They're winning?
Uh, I can't find a score on it yet, so it doesn't appear.
So it's not?
Just started at 8:30, so I, they don't show any.
It's coinciding with the Nuggets, right? They play this weekend?
Uh, do, they start this weekend, the Nuggets in the playoffs?
I think so.
Yeah.
I've given up on the Nuggets, not given up on them, I just. The NBA.
Oh, I give up on the NBA, definitely. I don't even do that much NFL stuff, so when I work home, of course.
You might be doing stats on Mr. Rogers.
Uh, we'll see.
Mr. Rogers?
Aaron Rodgers.
Oh, I was gonna say, you know, when Mr. Rogers went to school? Rollins College, right where my daughter graduated.
Oh, it's awesome.
Is that right?
That's their pride, that's their number one alumni. Large school down outside Orlando. We are ready.
You're ready?
Yeah.
Come on in, you have to. It came on.
Right on time.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm doing well.
All right, cool.
I just say everyone, it's like seeing a person.
It's amazing.
It is.
So we got a few questions, I'll go through mine real quick, and then after, everybody goes around the table and asks us some questions, we got plenty of time.
Okay.
All right. In your opinion, what are the primary role of the city council?
Fantastic, that's a great way to start. What is the role of city council? Well, city council does a lot. City council, well, a lot of people don't necessarily know what city council, or maybe would overlook a local city council. Local government really has the biggest impact on your day-to-day lives. It talks about the roads, we're gonna talk about all those services Littleton provides, which is many and is fantastic. Um, but I think, and I wrote this in my letter, I think the biggest thing that city council can do is serve. We are elected, or council, not we, but you know, council, members are elected by the public, and their duty is to serving the public. It is trying to make sure that we use our resources widely, wisely, whether that be financial resources, whether that be environmental resources. It is to make sure that we're using these to the best of our ability to benefit the residents and the businesses and the people who visit the city, because with everyone who comes within the city of Littleton, the bounds of city of Littleton, I think we have a duty to make sure that they feel welcomed and supported. And I think that's, that's the job of city council.
All right, cool. Uh, the weekly time commitment, not including city council meetings, to read materials and outside meetings, approximately 10 to 20 hours a week, a custom artist in the week. Uh, meetings can be during the day, sometimes, sometimes during the day, but evenings. Are you willing and available to spend the necessary time to be an effective council member?
Yes, I am. I am, and I love to read.
Are you willing to attend a council, to attend council meetings and other events in person?
Yes, I am.
Great. Oh, the personal and professional skills you have, one of the most essential or beneficial skills that you agree to council?
So, like I mentioned, I love to read, I'm also a student. That is what I've dedicated most of my life to, and I, I'm actually a very good student, I do excel. So, while I will admit that I, I don't know everything, and I think we have to kind of go into this, admitting that I'm not, there's no way you could possibly know everything. I am willing and able to commit the time to studying the materials, to putting in the research and doing the work necessary to be an effective leader. So that, that's one of the strongest, the strongest, I don't know, skills, I guess you would say, that I bring to council is the ability to learn and the willingness to learn. Secondly, I do have a background in environmental studies, I have a background in chemistry, one of my undergrad degrees is in chemistry. So I worked for a short time at a environmental nonprofit, so I, you know, as the city is embarking on the study to evaluate the city's sustainability, I think I'll definitely become in, that, those skills will come in useful there as well.
Yeah, cool. Are you familiar with the Littleton building codes?
I have been reading those building codes, yes, I am.
Any significant council activity over the next six months is unified land use codes. What is your current understanding of the codes?
So I'm looking forward to seeing the draft that comes out on June 7, so in a couple of weeks. I have been looking at the building codes. As my role, I was the former chair of the Next Generation Committee. We did undertake two pretty substantial written documents, providing feedback to council on those codes, specifically looking at the downtown district as well as sustainability, and I was very hands-on on both of those, those projects. So I have gotten in, into the codes through that way, and then also just, in the meantime, as we're, we're looking forward towards this, the project of looking at this ULUC that's coming out very soon, I've been going into the codes and reading, reading those. But again, I said, I will admit I don't have direct hands-on experience professionally with reading codes, but within my capacity as serving on a board, I do have some knowledge.
Please describe your community involvement and/or relevant experience over the last five years.
Fantastic, so, as I mentioned, I was the chair of the Next Generation Advisor Committee for two years. I was one of the founding members and the first chair, so I served on that committee for two years, with a short time period of being the vice chair. I'm also on the Board of South Central Langston, the vice president, it's been, this is my second term as vice president with that committee.
Boy, I'm ready to sit down.
Oh, you don't know what you're pressing on.
Holy, this is hilarious, I'm scared of my law school. Pay attention to the one.
So, maybe because I still don't know, I'm on the board of SMLC, so, you know, I work closely on both of these city-centric activities. I work very closely with the city of Littleton, again, getting into the codes, getting into everything that's coming up with council. I stay very relevant and aware of everything that is happening within the city. So I think that has allowed me to build very deep and strong connections to the community, as well as understanding what is going on within the community and how to best serve. Prior to, last five years, prior to returning home after I finished my master's degree, I did serve as the secretary for the entire School of Cinematic Arts for the graduate students. So that was elected from the entire graduate student council, graduate student body, I did my master's at USC. So from that ability, I came with the ability to create agendas and to work within very contentious environment. Yes, it was, it was very, very contentious, and so a lot of what I did as a secretary and as a member of that, that board, it was trying to build these connections and find ways to work together with people who didn't like each other very much. I think very similar to, to local governments as well.
Are you familiar with the city budget?
Yes, I am.
Uh, please identify what you believe are two of the top issues facing the city.
So I think the top issues facing the city is going to be the budget shortfall, especially, I think it's about, did I say about $5 million? I think it's 6.5 that the city needs in the Capital Improvements Fund, and are projected to only have 1.5. So that is a significant amount of money that needs to be found through sustainable revenue sources. Even prior to COVID, the city was lacking to have these sustainable revenue sources, and so I think that, as I know council, you've been working on this, and that is kind of your current, current work plan is trying to find creative ways that are able to make up these budget shortfalls. So I think that's the main problem, main, I wouldn't say problem, because I don't think things are really problems, I think issues that get in the way are just opportunities to look for new and creative solutions. So I don't know that there's ever a problem that can't be solved without some ingenuity and some, some creativity. Uh, I think the second, second biggest issue surrounding the budget, I think, is just making sure that we're continuing to allocate our funds appropriately, I know the city has switched over to a priority-based budgeting system, and so I think we need to make sure that we're going back in and looking at all of those priorities to make sure that those are going to be met effectively. I know, especially with the Capital Improvements Fund, we're looking at replacing the fleet in the next few years. I think street maintenance and making sure that we don't fall into, um, we don't fall into the budget shortfall when it comes to maintenance and infrastructure, but also making sure that we are looking at, what's the term that I'm looking for here? That's what I'm looking for. But we're making sure that we're not falling behind on these maintenances, because I, I've heard over and over again from so many different residents.
Deferred maintenance, you're referring to?
Deferred maintenance, thank you, that's, deferred was the term. That we, that providing infrastructure and roads, I mean, some people, you know, when I would go door-to-door talking to people during my campaign, people would say, well, what can you do about that pothole, you know, down the street? It's, it's really these things that people deal with on their everyday lives that are so important, so I think we need to make sure that we're appropriately allocating our funds to cover those.
Yeah, cool, well, thank you, will you have a chance to ask some questions, we'll go around to her.
Good to see you, Ashwin, thanks for applying.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Um, you mentioned aspiring to be an effective leader. Appreciate you voicing that. If you were appointed, what would be your philosophy of council leadership?
That is a really good question.
Twice a month, yeah. You didn't hear it from me, Scott.
What would be my philosophy? Uh, I think to be an effective leader, I've learned, especially with my time serving on graduate council and as chair of a committee, it's, it's listening really has to come first. I think putting aside maybe your own, you have to lead from your own beliefs, and, and I, I want to do this, and I have done all of my community service because I, I love Littleton. This is where I grew up, this is where I intend to live, you know, the rest of my life, I suppose, just like my grandmother. She was born in Colorado and she's gonna die in Colorado, like, this truly is my home, and I have a really deep affinity for this community. And so if you lead from that point of wanting to serve and wanting to, to provide the, the best possible that you can give to your community, I think that has to be, so it's not necessarily having your own ego get in the way, because I will, like I said, I admit I don't know everything, and it's, it's having these conversations with the community members to, to really hear what it is that they need and what they want, and then again, working to find those creative solutions to address those needs.
Thanks, Ashwin, nice to see you.
It's good to see you, too.
Yeah, thanks for applying. I had a question that I asked everybody else, but I did notice, congratulations on your first year in your post-actual program, that's exciting.
Thank you.
And.
At least saw you guys professional students when I was in college.
That sounds about accurate. So are you going back into the class, are you going back to California this fall then, or will you still do it virtual?
So the powers that be at UCLA have decided it will be kind of a hybrid. So some of the, the classes and seminars will be virtual, while others are going to be in person. I personally, and this is why I decided to apply, is I don't believe I will be moving back in the fall. It is not, and this is gonna get a little personal, it's not the best time for me and my family, for me, I feel like, to leave at this point. My grandmother is 96, again, she was, you know, Colorado native, and she was diagnosed with dementia last year, which has gotten progressively worse throughout the shutdown and pandemic without the, the public. Yeah, so it just is not, not the best time, I think, for me to leave, my family, and so I think, for that reason, I've decided, of, I'll defer, you know, for now, I don't know if getting a doctor will be in the future. I can't see the future, but for right now, I just feel like I will be able to do the most good here.
I'm sorry about that, my mother-in-law just got diagnosed with dementia, and it's, we're trying to get her to move out here, so totally feel where you are, but congratulations on that one year, that's awesome.
Well, thank you.
So the question that I asked everybody else.
Your purple hank is killing me, man.
Why? The purple hank is the best.
I'm sorry, I had to get it off my chest, okay? The earring agreement says.
What's that, what's that, what's the term, um, order something? One order, quarter.
Sorry, 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 don't let me word up.
Now, do you have any intentions of running for council this fall, this November?
I knew that would be a question, and I, I think it probably surprises me more than anyone else. I am seriously considering it. I truly feel that I have so much more to give to this community, and it, it is a, a serious, serious consideration. I used to be like 90%, no. Waiting for it was the other way, so.
That's great, and if you do, do you foresee running, do you foresee that impacting your ability to serve on council? Because you know, I mean, you've already run through my campaign, so.
I, yes, I do know.
Yeah.
I think I have learned a lot going through that first campaign, there's so many things I would do differently. There's so many things that I could improve, and that, you know, I, so I don't see that as impacting. I know, like Jerry said, it is a time commitment, but I mean, I currently have been serving on four, I have four meetings a month, which I know is not like a lot, but, you know, in addition to setting agendas and all of my schoolwork and caring for my grandmother, so I, I do know how to effectively budget my time. Great, thank you, thanks.
Uh, thinking about if you were appointed to city council, is there something you would hope to accomplish in the coming months?
Yeah, well, I have been looking at the, the council's work plan and the, the goals that you have set in place, and so while I am completely willing to, enthusiastic really about the plans that are, that are in progress, and jumping right into that and being able to fulfill the mandate that council has already kind of set in motion. I, I would like to see some more action being taken on the Tri-City's homelessness study, which was released early this year, at the end of last year. This is something that personally I do feel very passionate about, due to some of the volunteer work that I did when I was in Los Angeles, and as a, as a big point at the Diversity and Inclusion Equity and Belonging Subcommittee for Next Gen that I started, uh, really feels passionately about as well. I think that study was fantastic, although I could say I would have saved you guys a lot of money. It was nothing that I, in there that I didn't say when I was running for council, but you know, it's finding these solutions, and I think the city, of course, on its own is not able to, just with the size of our community, as well as the financial situation that we are in, able to address all of the issues that we need, because it truly needs to be a holistic approach to dealing with this issue of our unhoused residents, because they are still residents of the city. Um, and I think dealing with this will also help these residents, as well as make the current population of the city feel a little more comfortable. And so I would really like to see the city maybe create a safe parking zone or a safe camping zone. You know, during the shutdowns, I got very close with an unhoused resident, she lives in her car, you probably have seen her with her dog around Bemis or by the museum, we had very long conversations when, when the library was shut down. I was working, volunteering for about 20 hours a week doing all of the virtual programming that the city, or the library put up on their YouTube channel. Jerry, you know that, I was there filming you. And during those conversations with her, it's just.
Cameras follow me wherever I go.
You're so photogenic, what can we say?
Oh, yeah, right.
But one of the things, one of the easiest things, because again, it has to be a holistic approach, and the first prong has to be finding safe housing, and then from there, you can build on finding those connections with the community services, which many of them already exist within our community, but it's making sure that people are able to find those connections. And so I think one very simple thing that the city can do that would not really cost any money is just have a safe place for people who are living in their, their cars, or people who are camping to, to be, so that it's not, um, you know, and that also will help the other residents, I mean, there's always this kind of like, you know, not. you know, and that also will help the other residents, I mean, there's always this kind of like, you know, not in my backyard mentality where people, I believe, I believe people are genuinely good and they do care, but it it feels a little different when it is in your backyard. I mean, personally, at our, at my parents' house, we had, well, three break-in attempts, but two of those were from unhoused people, just kind of, you know, snooping around, seeing if they could, you know, get in. And I don't believe that they're bad people, they just need our assistance, so that's one thing that I would love to see the council do.
Um, other than that, uh, is there something that you're real passionate about, uh, and another issue, and if that's it, uh, that's fine, if, but is there anything else?
Oh, yes, Pam, you know, you know me, I am very passionate about a lot of issues. Um, one thing I will mention very quickly, and it's, I think, one of the guiding forces that we kind of found in next gen is they had a strong passion for equity with our community and making sure that everyone has access to the services that the city provides, and making sure that everyone has a strong foundation on which to begin their lives and to to live and to grow in the communities, we're talking about young people. And then secondly, I have to mention that I'm very passionate about open space preservation, as well as sustainability and environmental um requirements for the city. I mean, it's, we 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 only have so much open space and resources within our our community. And if we are not looking out for those and ma- and managing them well, if we are not looking to preserve or conserve what we do have, it can very quickly break on, so that is something that I.
I could have guessed this.
But I'm really sure.
If you could make one improvement in the city, what would it be?
Oh, I have to tell you, I didn't see this question coming. Um, I would say, I think there needs to be uh an expanded awareness of where this this, and I'd say conservation of both our environment, as well as conservation of our historical assets. Um, the city has a very unique culture and flavor to Littleton that I think is very special. And when the city, and I think, I have to applaud you for moving forward with the downtown, um, the downtown historical preservation district. I think that's fantastic, and but there's there's more to the city to conserve than just two blocks along Main Street and Alamo. I think there's so much rich tradition and history in the city, and not that I don't think the city is doing, this is the caveat. Um, because I know in the admission plan, there is a a strong focus on conserving the character of our community. Um, but I think what council could be doing, or the city in general could be doing to improve, is is expanding awareness of there's more than just the downtown area, because when people think of businesses, when they think of historical preservation, their mind always goes to downtown. Um, but I think there's a really rich vibrancy to the rest of the city that, um, I think awareness could be expanded. Um, secondly, I I think transparency is another aspect, I know you probably asked for one, but when it comes to communication, I I think transparency is incredibly important. Um, I've heard over and over again that people feel like they don't know what's going on with the city. And I don't necessarily think that that's, people, they are interested, they want to be involved, they want to know, but there is sort of a a a bar of entry, you have to have the time, you know, to 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 serve on council, there there's a financial aspect, I mean, you have to be able to commit to the time or the the money to run a campaign. Um, and or, and there's also a bar of entry of knowledge, that people in the city feel like they would like to be informed. Um, but for many reasons, they have, you know, young kids, or you know, they have a busy career, they don't really have the time to engage and watch every single city council member, you know, and there aren't those members of the community that do that. And, you know, I'm I'm one of those people that I'm always, you know, checking up what the city is doing, but not everyone can do that. So I think making um, making it easy for people to find out what's going on and for meeting people where they are is really important. Um, I also have to commend the city for the the plans, the preliminary plans that I heard for getting feedback on the ULUC. I think going into community centers, going into, you know, laundry mats, making sure that there are paper copies, so that people don't have to have, you know, that digital divide to get over. Um, I think all of those are really great steps, and I think we can continue to do that uh across the board. It's not just when we have, you know, this big ULUC, I think, um, all and every step of the way, we can try and to make sure that we are connecting with people, um, where they are in their community.
Uh, you mentioned that allocate funds uh appropriately, do you think that's a city council function?
The city council controls the budget of the city of Littleton, so I I do believe that's a city, uh, the city council's purview. Um, where specifically those funds go.
Right.
That is, I would be in collaboration with the city manager.
Right.
I mean, he he would deal with more of that things, but the city council does control the budget.
Thanks. In your uh cover letter, you wrote, uh, I will bring to city council diversity of perspective and identity that has sadly been lacking from our local political leadership. Explain that a little bit as to what what you mean by that.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, I'm a Colorado native, I'm third generation Littleton resident. I'm also the daughter of an immigrant who came to this country with forty dollars in his pocket, nothing else. Um, I also, so I have a rich tradition and background of history that I'm going to bring to this community. So I have the knowledge and the community connections within Littleton, because I have lived here so long, my family has lived here so long. But I also have the knowledge of what it's like to, of an immigrant family. Um, when I was little, we were growing up, one of the the things that kind of impacted me the most, we we sponsored a young man, um, his name is Fati, who grew up in a refugee camp in Kenya, and he came to the United States and he was seventeen, seventeen or eighteen years old. I was in elementary school at the time, and he was sent to the United States to support his entire family. And, you know, to see him get up every day, walk a mile to the bus in the snow to go get half his job down the Denver Post, really impacted me, that the struggles that immigrants have, and and he had the support system of my mother and father. But I think there are so many um other people who don't have that, and then they kind of fall through the cracks. So, you know, I I bring that perspective, um, I bring the perspective as being a a young woman of color in the city, which Littleton, I know from the statistics, is primarily white and older. But we exist, I exist, you know, younger people in the city, I know the city council's been looking to get uh input from younger residents of the city. I will bring that, especially having served on the next-gen committee, and, you know, having, and and being, you know, a mixed-race woman. That's definitely a perspective that unfortunately, I feel like has been lacking, and I would like to bring that.
And then you mentioned uh local govern- government, I don't know if you were talking about Littleton's particular, but being contentious. Do you feel like, are Littleton's contentious?
No, I don't feel like Littleton is particularly contentious, no, I I I feel like there's a, in the past, yes. I definitely, I think we all can agree, we all know that there there was some contention or in the past, but maybe I'm in, government in general can be contentious and, um, I'm.
Yeah, the municipality level then?
There's always going to be some tensions, I think the way that we uh address them is going to be what's important. Um, making sure that we're, and this is what I can promise that I would do. I would approach any disagreement or any conversation with respect, and again, with like listening first. Um, I am a very passionate person, I I do have very strong opinions, but I think if everyone approaches the conversation in a way that, we all have the same end goal, where the disagreements may come is is how to achieve that goal, but I think just keeping that we want the best for Littleton in mind is going to end up serving the entire council and as well as the city as a whole better.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Does Shirley Harris, for her bill, do, which is?
Shirley Harris.
She's somebody that we appointed years ago and replaced, I think it was Debbie Foster, but she was an African-American.
She was.
Yeah, she does, that's the last African-American I remember on council, but she was appointed as well.
She was appointed, I know Jose Trujillo served on council for a number of years. I guess it, it's it's not a bad thing, I I.
He did twice.
Yeah, yeah, he seems a long-term council member.
All right, any other questions, anybody? Do you have questions for us?
I don't know, but I do, I feel like we have had a good conversation. Maybe I would ask, what do, what does the council, I know I've read your goals and your 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 action items and and what is that you want to accomplish for this year? So I would like to ask, what is not represented in those goals? Maybe what's not written out, if I'm if I'm reading.
That's all you wanna know, Scott, why don't you take this?
Do I know where this is going?
Yeah, geez, I mean, it's pretty high in the sky, I don't know how far our plate is, uh, and staff's plate, but I I mean, if if I could wave a magic wand, I think everyone knows that I would, I would have um a sustainability master plan, and I would have um projects prioritized and funded after what I hope would be a pretty robust um community conversation. I got super excited about uh native plants and nutrients. Um, I get super excited about um this sort of fun, fun city, that we talked about. Uh, well, which is supposed to be your job now, right?
The next-gen committee?
The June agenda, yes.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd really like to see um community-supported agriculture in the city, I think that'd be really fun. Um, I uh, I appreciate you talking about a safety park program, I've I voiced that uh in the past, I I would really like to see that happen. I want more chickens.
If appointed, I will give you more chickens, Scott.
Yeah, I mean, for me personally, that's that's some of what would be missing, I suppose, yeah, thanks for asking.
All right. All right, well, thank you for coming in.
Of course, thank you for having me, it was, yeah, so great to see everyone. Well, you know, we're fine. All right, then, thank you so much, have a great night, everyone.
Bye-bye.